Okay, item number five, the allegiance, do you understand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, again, with the roll call tonight, that's EJ Bell.
Present.
Trevor Dersky.
Present.
David Fisher.
Present.
And absent this evening are Samantha Peterson and Jim Kane. And with that, so we will move on to the approval of the agenda by the city council. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Kim Bell. Further discussion? Good, hearing none. Roll call vote is EJ Bell.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, we provide citizens uh opportunity to antwip, to address the city council on the items that are not on the agenda. And then in conformance with the Iowa vote of meetings law, no action or deliberation can occur during the citizens' forum. And as you walk to the lectern, uh state your name and address for the record. And speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. And so this will be the time to address the council.
Yes, that's me. I've never done this before, so bear with me. My name is Kim Love. I'm not a resident of Atkins, but my mother has proudly called this home for over twenty years. She's always loved the community and never had a problem here until the weekend of the garage sales two weeks ago. I raised my seven boys with two simple life mottos. There's only one thing in this world no one can take from you, and that's your word. And hard work pays off. Nothing in this world is free. No one owes you anything. If you want something, you work for it. My son lives by those principles. He's married with two children, works full-time as a chef at the Country Taco Club, volunteers at the public library, and recently started a small business selling breads and pastries. When he saw the advertisement for the garage sales, he thought it would be a great opportunity to share his baked goods, meet new people, and spend time with his kids at his grandma's house. While selling his bread that weekend, Councilman Jim pulled up in his vehicle, yelled out the car window that my son was selling illegally on city property, and that it added that he'd hate to see someone call the police on him. He then drove off, but circled the block two more times. Few minutes later, Deputy County Sheriff's Deputy showed up. With visible reluctance, the officer asked my son to move to the other side of the sidewalk because it's considered city property. He thanked my son for his cooperation and apologized for having to ask him to move, explaining that someone had complained. Not one time during that conversation with the councilman or the sheriff was the issue of safety ever mentioned. It was more of a power trip. To be honest, the whole situation was upsetting and unnecessary. The wasted county law enforcement resources on something so petty and idle and trivial left my four-year-old granddaughter wondering why the police are talking to her daddy. And my son was hurting no one. He was on the grass in front of my mother's home, the same area she's required to mow and maintain. This happened during garage sales weekends where nearly everyone participating had items by the curb. My son was simply a dad working hard and trying to build something good for his family. When I told him I planned to speak here tonight, his response was, Mom, I don't wanna make enemies. Maybe that guy's just lonely, and the city council is all he has. That's the kind of heart and humility that this town should stand for: hard work, empathy, and respect. I'm not here to stir up trouble. I'm not here to ask that situation, I'm just here to ask that situations like this be handled with more understanding and common sense in the future. Families shouldn't feel embarrassed or intimidated for trying to do something positive. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you for your comments tonight. This time, we move on to the new business, number five. We have ordinance two hundred and thirty-five. That's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atkins. Two thousand and five is amended, uh amending Chapter six, one zero six point zero eight, and uh entitled Collection Fees, changing the amounts billed for residential solid waste and recycling and landfill fees. Uh this time, Scott Flores, sitting next to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh just again, kind of build on what we've done previously. At the last council meeting, the council approved the agreement between the city and S and J Sanitation uh for recycling solid waste and yard waste collection services uh for the city. That contract is set to begin on January first of twenty twenty-six. Uh if you recall, we had, of course, competitively did out that uh that contract, and S and J was the least costly vendor that submitted a proposal for the city's consideration. So the next step in the process is to consider ordinance that would establish the effective rates as of January one, twenty twenty-six. Uh do wanna point out that under the current contract that we have now with Waste Management, that would have been an automatic renewal affected January one, twenty twenty-six, uh so the rate would have increased for the residents to thirty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents per account. And under the new contract that we would have with S and J Sanitation, for the same type of service, a sixty-five gallon container for weekly solid waste and ninety-five gallon container for bi-weekly recycling, that will decrease to nineteen dollars. So we'll be dropping from thirty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents that was scheduled for January one, twenty twenty-six to nineteen dollars for that sixty-five gallon container for solid waste and ninety-five for recycling on a bi-weekly basis. And of course, yard waste continues on uh as it is currently uh April through uh November. The option for a ninety-five gallon container is also available, so residents will be able to uh pay a little bit additional, get a ninety-five gallon container for solid waste collection weekly and ninety-five gallon container bi-weekly. Uh so that amount will be twenty-four dollars per month. Again, that is more than a ten-dollar decrease for a ninety-five gallon container per month. The monthly landfill rate uh will increase from five dollars to six dollars. That's something that uh we have that landfill charge on our utility bill. And what that does is that simply pays the city's uh essentially the the dues, the membership responsibilities to the Benton County landfill. So that is not the tonnage fees. The hauler, S and J, they will pay the tonnage fees for the solid waste that's collected in the city back ends. That landfill fee is on the utility bill that you receive simply for our responsibilities of being a member of the Benton County landfill. And so the five dollars actually wasn't covering the total cost there, so six dollars will will cover that cost going forward. So so tonight is the first of three readings for this ordinance, so we've got it kind of uh sequenced up. So the first reading will be tonight. Uh if we have the second, if we have another meeting on October twenty-eighth, that would be the second reading of the ordinance, and the final reading would take place at your regular meeting uh first of November. Then we will publish the ordinance and it will go into effect. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about the uh the ordinance itself. It does provide for the escalator clause, same clause that we have currently in our agreement with the five percent renewal on January one, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and twenty-thirty.
If anybody has any questions on that?
I don't have any questions. I'm just excited to get this going. You know, a lot, I've got a lot of compliments about it. Everybody's excited to see the bill go down, even if it's a little bit, so.
I just recognize Trevor, Dave, and you, EJ, for sure, from your board conference.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion approved.
That's a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thirty-five. And this is motion by Bell, second by Fisher. Any further discussion? Good, hearing none. Roll call vote is EJ Bell.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Motion carries. The first reading is approved. Push to three. Now moving on to item number five D, Public Poli- Public Purpose Policy for expenditures of funds of recognition and support of city employees, volunteers, elected officials, and use of city-owned buildings. Scott, would you read that?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Uh just a way of uh way of background on this uh resolution. This relates to expenditure of public funds uh for uh city-owned buildings, facilities, and public purposes. And it really gives us guidance then on how we're able to utilize public facilities and spend public funds, uh again, under the guise of a public purpose. So we've done that throughout the years, kind of just uh as individual uh events occur, individual situations. So this is a broader blanket policy that covers all of those things, so we don't have to always do that individually by uh resolution. So just to kind of walk through this, uh in terms of items identified in the resolution. So for example, it would define a public expenditure for a public purpose or recognizing Atkins employees, volunteers, elected appointed officials, uh in recognition programs. So for example, uh buying plaques. So a departing mayor, council member, city, longtime city employee, uh very customary that a city would honor their service uh in a ceremony, give them a plaque. So spending funds on those kinds of things, you have identified that that meets the public purpose criteria of the law. So that would be something included in the or- in the uh resolution. Uh also, just kind of working my way through some of the highlights of this, uh public expenditure for food and non-alcoholic beverages associated with city functions. So for example, if we were to have an open house or a comprehensive plan, we're not paying our comprehensive plan, and we wanted to serve, let's say, coffee and cookies and that, and the city was to buy those, then this policy identifies that that's an appropriate uh purchase using city funds to to buy those refreshments for a public event like that. Support, uh C, in the resolution, just basically indicates support of nonprofit organizations, although we don't have a Chamber of Commerce here. Uh if we were to join an economic development corporation and the dues that would go along with our involvement in that uh organization, this indicates that that's that's a public purpose, and city funds are okay to spend on uh joining something like nonprofit organization like an economic development corporation, Chamber of Commerce, or an organization like that. Uh and then likewise, again, just indicating that use of city-owned facilities and buildings for maybe outreach for similar activities by schools and colleges and other governmental entities, nonprofit organizations, so for example, like the Prince of the Library that benefit the residents of Atkins, uh that they can use these city facilities and buildings, and that meets the criteria uh of of purpose. Uh working away a little further into some specific programs, again, as I mentioned earlier, is it like we have city employees completing certain milestones of years of service, uh that we could purchase something, uh give like a plaque that would honor their their years of service to the city. Uh flowers and plants, that's uh unfortunately sign sort of a common one. If a member of the council say, for example, spouse, God forbid, would pass away, the city would send a plant or flowers uh to the to the funeral home. But this is recognizing that that is an acceptable use of uh public funds, and the city wished to do that. Uh sustaining supplies, again, is just indicating that the city wished to provide, uh so for example, uh in Clear Lake, uh we used to have, I used to have appointments throughout the day, and we'd have coffee pot there, and citizens would come in and I'd invite them to have a cup of coffee, for example. And uh so it just simply in the case that we do decide to purchase something like coffee, uh that that is an acceptable purpose long as it's made available to the to the public for for that use, so. Uh and those things, firstly, are all too often things that are uh bound in audits when when they do things that do evidently declare a public purpose for those kinds of things. Uh so this is really, again, just a broad blanket resolution that just covers all of those things, so.
Again, Scott, thank you for taking care of this. I know I've had a few conversations on this, so. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve res- ordinance, um.
Make a motion approved.
I'm sorry, is it Resolution two zero two five dash ten dash three?
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Bell, second by Dersky. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, EJ Bell.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, item number five C, that's ordinance two hundred and thirty-six, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atkins, Iowa, is amended by amending provisions pertaining to section ninety-two point zero four, service discontinuance of fees and temporary suspension of services. Scott, would you read that?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amendment on the utility service disconnection. So Shelley and I were kind of going through this with uh some uh code updates that we were working on. So what we're proposing here is in subsection three of ordinance number ninety-two point oh four, that we would replace uh the hearing office, as it's defined there, with a city administrator instead of the mayor in that case. So uh when people were to request a hearing before their services discontinued, that it would be uh with me and not uh with the mayor. Subsection four, fees, uh we've modified the disconnection and reconnection fee. Uh right now, it's currently twenty-five dollars, so we would increase that to seventy-five dollars. So again, twenty-five dollars to go out and uh go through the administrative process here at the office with the utility clerk. Where she enters all of that system in, writes up a work order to send somebody that's making, you know, well, over forty dollars an hour out to turn off uh turn off the service, uh and then to go back out and reconnect the service. Generally, those things aren't just, also, you go out and just turn it, sometimes you have to dig and a little work goes into it. So we're really not even anywhere near covering our costs at twenty-five dollars. And so seventy-five dollars, we think, is is a very fair uh and reasonable price to go out and uh disconnect someone. In this case, of course, for for non-payment, uh so they would be disconnected, or their service would be resorted, they'd have to pay the seventy-five dollar reconnection fee before we restore that service. Uh and then modifying section ninety-two point zero eight, just to be consistent with uh the earlier subsection four there. This is for, for example, Silver's, for example, they leave town, uh the they request to have their service temporarily suspended. So it was just kind of a quirk, I think. Uh we were charging a hundred twenty-five, a hundred twenty dollars for the turn off and turn on there, uh but only twenty-five dollars if you didn't pay the bill. So so I just think it was kind of a quirk, so so we wanna make that balanced at seventy-five dollars in both cases. So if you if you launch your service, turn it off at curb, it turned back on, winter gone for the winter, it's seventy-five dollars. And if you don't pay your bill, again, it's in your turn off, and you need to turn back on, it's seventy-five dollars, so. And that's all I've got on that one.
All right, thank you, Scott. We have a motion to approve, this will be the first reading, ordinance two three six.
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Bell. Second by Dersky. Further discussion? Just like to add that generally, once the letters go out and nonpayment, we we do end up with very few people that actually get to a point of disconnection, so um that's a good thing to see. We do like to keep, help people stay current on the bills, however. All right. Okay, with that, the roll call will be EJ Bell.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, then moving on, item number five D, that's a consideration of a quote from Permar Security Services for access control systems for city hall. Um library doors, security cameras for city hall, and conversion of the fire alarm from the phone line to cellular dialer. Permar Security System, uh smoke system. Scott?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Uh so this is something that's been talked about for for a fair amount of time here, so apologies to the law to kind of get these quotes. Uh but the first one merited would be for the uh electronic uh control, access control system for basically you have the front door to this building, the front door of the administrative building, and the front door to the library. So instead of having all these keys to open up all these doors, we just have either a card or a fob uh that we would be able to control access and know who's coming in, what time, have complete, you know, accounting log of all of that information. Uh and then, so for example, if I were to lose these keys, we don't have to call a locksmith then uh to come in and change out all the locks every time the keys are lost or misplaced, or maybe some keys duplicated inappropriately. So uh we had the system in Clear Lake. It worked fantastic. Uh you know, I had a lock, some pair of fobs, some people had the cards. Uh it really works nice when you're coming in the morning, you got your hands full, uh and you don't have to fumble around for a key uh in when it's freezing cold out there to try to try to get in. Uh so it worked great. Also, we continue to work on other buildings, so the fire station has this exact same access control system that we're, we would propose here for this building. Uh so that would prevent, in this case for me, for example, having to maintain all these keys to get into these doors here, and then have a fob to get in over at the fire station. And then we did improve the access control system for the pavilion, so to have just all these different uh lock systems going. So it'd be nice to have them all kind of run. Then when employees come and go, and they have their fob, and we don't get back, we just simply deactivate that fob. New employees come on, we activate it, uh get control again, who goes where, and who has what access. You know, a lot of times, especially during the construction here, I'll be here early in the morning, and these construction guys, generally, I get here about seven, they're here about the same time working, uh the electrician come over, and you know, gotta hunt down some keys to go up to the upstairs for electronics, uh you know, it's above the library, so uh it'd be really nice to be able to not always have to hunt down a lot of hard keys all the time. So that's kind of that uh situation. As the mayor mentioned, uh there's also proposed over two cameras included in that. So we would have a camera here at the lobby in city hall, and one outside of the building, and this is Permar, who uh has merited uh has our security control systems currently. So it'd be for the two cameras there. I know that's been talked about for a while. Uh and then while we were talking to them, uh to take our uh fire alarm system, right now it has two phone lines that go into our fire alarm system. Uh so we would go to what we have at Fire Department, or gonna have at Fire Department, which is a cellular dialer. So in the event the phone lines would ever go down, uh you know, where we have one phone line going in, the second phone line is kind of a redundant line. But typically, if one goes down, the other one will go down. So very rarely does the cellular ever go down. So that's why it's really inevitable, when talking to the vendor, that probably in a few years, this system would have been replaced. We would have replaced it in up to three years, because they're not using the phone lines for us anymore. It's all the cellular dialer. Uh just because, again, the the added reliability of the cellular service. So so that would be to make that change, and then we would be able to eliminate all the, you know, forty dollars a month times two for the phone bills uh that we have associated for that line, and just go with the cellular, which is the twenty, twenty-five dollars a month right now. So should pay back in probably three years.
So there's no ongoing cost to this, then?
That's the twenty-five dollars a month. For the cellular dialer.
Um no, as far as.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, there is. Yes, there is. Uh five, five hundred and thirteen dollars. I have to tell you exactly.
A year.
A year?
A year.
Yeah, a year.
A year?
A year.
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause we just.
For the one we have now.
And we weren't gonna put one over at the, like, across the street, or at the pavilion, kind of thing? A camera?
I did give up the bull's foot camera there, you know. I could have for a while.
I I'm just saying, since we, it's been vandalized multiple times.
It has.
I mean, that camera's gonna detour like ninety-nine percent of people.
Yeah, yeah, I could ask him for his.
I I mean, you know, I would, I would throw that in there.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, we just spent five thousand.
Let's keep this going. Let's don't slow down.
So I'm just.
I mean, this is.
No, no, I wanna get.
Since the day one, when I got here.
Correct. You already know, since two thousand and eighteen. So I'm just saying, like, this, I wanna approve this, but like, ask.
Sure.
Can we just spend, what, four or five thousand dollars cleaning it up?
Yeah, you already did that for a rest of your.
Correct, but still, you know, so.
Yeah, I was five thousand.
Correct, so. But yeah, you know, my, I'm happy this is finally happening. It should have happened in two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, thank you for doing this.
And that's your point. Yeah, Shelley and I looked that up. So it's Midwest Fire.
Alarm, Midwest alarm.
Farm is the vendor, so so we do have an annual fee for the fire alarm that is on top of the two phone lines.
Okay. And and as far as the card activation and things of that nature, or termination, will all be done in-house or through them?
Yeah, yeah, very.
And that's not an additional cost?
Uh well, there, that is. There, you do have a monthly fee for that.
Like a hosting.
But there's a uh monitoring system. There are people that monitor that. And so they're the folks that you contact, either activate the alarm, test it. They they actually control the system.
Okay.
And that also does include moving the uh alarm system to the inside, too.
Did they give any ETA on, once we pass this, like, when they could do, start working on this?
I didn't get a day start date.
Okay. So.
Definitely needed.
So, yeah, the total's in, Scott, for the proposal, for those things?
Yep, for all those things, were uh seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-three cents.
That takes a lot of ridiculous.
And that's with the, I see ninety-seven, ninety-four dollars a month for the monitoring system, and then twenty-five dollars for the smoke system?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve, uh?
Motion to approve.
Second.
In the amount of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, ninety-five, ninety-three cents? Sound good?
I'm gonna just add to that, if you're whatever, this would be extended expense out of, we've got a budget.
Oh, yeah.
Already, so.
Yeah, yeah, let me do the budget of all of that, this is an amendment.
I'm just, financially, it's it's uh.
And then if you could just ask, you know, approve this, but just ask about doing the one over there.
Sure.
And we can make an amendment at the next meeting or something, or whatever.
Yeah, I can do that.
So I can't imagine it's gonna cost very much if those were that little, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll motion by Fisher. Second by, who did the side贡?
I did, I did.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote is EJ Bell.
Absolutely, yes.
David Fisher.
Aye.
And then Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, item number six, city administrative reports, Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh just a quick update. Uh so of course, in the bills tonight, uh was a payment to the contractor for the renovation improvements down to the old water plant, so I hope you have a chance to take a look at those. Uh appreciate the mayor painting the the wood. We boarded up a couple of windows. We followed here to go down came, so that that looks good. But I've got the two new entry doors, a couple of new windows, the new gutter, Dallas out, the overhead, right, it looks great. I mean, I think we could powder wash the building up. It's really much improved, and you know, those doors were all hollowed out and rotted, so they look great now. It worked great, so it was mighty well spent.
That's true.
Uh then, I just wanna mention, uh still, I hopefully have that final draft to present tonight on the Personnel Manual Employee Handbook, but still waiting for the attorneys to get that back. If you recall, uh well, it was on the council then, but uh uh council had hired a firm to draft that uh employee handbook, so that was drafted. We picked that up probably, I don't know, three, four months ago. We picked that up probably, I don't know, three, four months ago, I was supposed to start working on that. I did the edits and updates back to them, so that's all done, they just gotta make the final finishing touches and hopefully I'm able to present that at the next council.
That would be great, get that finalized. After twenty years.
Yes, then I was gonna also mention, Shelley's been working with the auditors, now the A of R coming out, so it might be even the first meeting there in November, the annual financial report. So I always gotta start stuff, the run of all those annual reports that we've got out, done, that everybody was so anxious to hear about. So the road use dashboard, the rule report, tip certification, A of R, they all kinda run together about that time.
Oh, did you say for first?
First, I knew it right around there.
And that's all.
Kind of stuff, the mayor's report, so under landfill commission meeting, they're installing a new, uh, a new reviewing systems out there, but kind of, and it's on the budget. That helps the rental costs that we all participate in. Scott and I met with some leadership from the Metro Economic Alliance to see whether that, um, that organization and Atkins can work together on some things. And then also reminder that, um, we do have that trick or treat on the thirty-first of October. And then by resolution some time ago, the city council, um, wanted to confine that to the hours of five to eight P M. You don't have to participate if you don't want to, it's just organized the time and recognize that it's not gonna be people out about and, uh, considers safety and, and watch out for each other. You can leave, leave your porch light off if you don't wanna participate, but, um, it just helps kinda organize a five day P M on October thirty-first. That's a running thing there, so, uh, uh. I'm gonna, um, express satisfaction too in the way the, the fire station's coming along. We have, I read a weekly updates with the contractor and, uh, materials coming along, drywall's filling up, um, a lot of activity over there. You're seeing some concrete being poured away and looking to on the rest of the week with, uh, good weather, so that's like a good thing. And that's the neighbor's reports, and then moving on to the consent agenda. That'll be the list of bills for approval, we have, we're just a dub, we have a, um, new list of bills tonight, so presented by, uh, city court, uh, Sterling, uh, at the meeting. So the one that's president of that package will be replaced by, um, this new list. Catch up on a few things there. And then we have approval of the September twenty-third city council meeting minutes. Approval of the city hall committee room by Atkins Friends of Library. Approval of September twenty-twenty-five financial reports, treasurer support, bank rec, reconciliation and revenue expense reports. And approval of the adding Veterans Day as recognized official holiday. And then approval of library board trustee new hire and salary recognition, a resolution. And approval of resolution two zero two five ten oh two, the resolution approving the preliminary and final plaque for goodment of second edition. That will be by planning zoning commissioner recommended for approval. And as the consent to contingent items.
Was that plaque?
Yes. Order of.
I think make motion to approve the consent agenda. Yeah, thanks for adding that, catching the holiday there.
Second. Motion by Dersky, second by Fisher. And for the discussion. Hearing none, roll called up, is EJ Bell?
Aye.
Trevor Dersky?
Aye.
David Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'll entertain other business, consider the council.
Yeah, I, I wanna recognize Shelley again for your ongoing efforts for, uh, savings within the city here. Shelley has identified multiple things throughout, since she started here, but the most recent one was the fax machine. That we had up here that was in, that we've been paying for, that were, it wasn't even hooked up. So again, Shelley, thanks for digging in and finding this stuff and addressing these things. Same goes for these, these ordinances and things of that nature that gets things straightened out, I appreciate it. I also, um, had a conversation with Kim Love, um, after the incident took place where Jim Kane went and addressed the family members there at the, her, at the great grandmother's house. I also, um, had questions, is this, is everything true? Come to find out, after I did talk with Scott, Scott had conversations with Jim and Jim, um, Kane also confirmed that that's actually what transpired. And I'm sorry, but, um, Jim Kane crossed the line, in my opinion. And that's something that, um, a city council person does not have any authority whatsoever. We have one vote, and that's all we have. However, Jim Kane crossed the line by approaching them and saying that he was a councilperson. And I want you guys to just think about this for just a minute. And have this get out into the social media or the media, that we've got a council member that's addressing somebody for selling baked goods. And where the councilperson's addressing this in front of a great grandmother and also a grandchild, great grandchild, four years old, the way I understand it. And, um, trying to shut that down because they're on city property. Well, that's crossing the line completely, um, should have never happened. I find it disturbing to me that now that's put me in the crosshairs and everybody that works for the city and any other councilperson. Because of Jim's actions. And I'm sorry, I had to apologize, um, to Kim for the city. Not for Jim's actions, he can, he can speak to that, but he's, he stands, the way I understand it, he stands behind his actions. And I find that really disturbing as well. After somebody would think about something like this, you'd think that they would, uh, actually apologize and try to back away from it, but that did not happen. I, I would like to have on the next meeting a, um, well, let me put it to you this way, I'd rather have Jim resign as city councilperson and just be done with his career as city councilperson, he only had a few meetings left. But if not, and he wants to come to the meeting and show up and show his face in the meeting, I'd like to ask that we discuss this as a city council and I would like to put together a censure of Jim for his actions, um, inappropriate actions by also calling the police officers. I just, I can't believe somebody would call the police officers or call the dispatch out of Benton County to address this situation as well, it just.
Didn't he do it himself? Did Jim call him, call himself?
Yes, yes, he called dispatch. So needless to say, um, that's what I'd like to have on the next meeting, but I'd rather him, in my opinion, resign.
Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Uh, yeah, I, I too talked to you, Kim, for a while, we had a really good conversation, you know, and I told you I have kids. I mean, and I know exactly where you, where he set that up, and I'm still baffled because, you know, I live over there on Circle View and I have no sidewalks. It's pretty much the same kinda thing. And so the way that that would represent, if I would have put my stuff on the same type of curb, he would have said the same type of thing to me. And that would have baffled my brain, cause my kids have sold plenty of things down there, especially Gris Hill Days, like, I mean, you could have driven around and probably found at least a dozen of somebody selling something, you know? And I agree with what you were saying earlier, that is not what this community's about, unfortunately, some of that stuff has happened. Um, so like I said, I apologized for that action. Well, I, it doesn't represent me, and I'm pretty confident it doesn't represent Trevor or Sammy, I, I'm sorry it happened, it should have never happened. I'm just, and I agree with what Dave had to say about Jim. It's unfortunately, he couldn't be here last meeting, couldn't be here to, tonight, you know? But yeah, I just, it's just hard to believe that actually happened, you know, cause that's not how it works and I, I got nothing, I was shocked by it.
Oh, everyone, everyone addressed it, everyone's been very kind, I was just, like you say, I was angry, and I'm explaining my story, because the first thing she said when she walked in my house is, I've got my daddy.
So, but.
That's the angry part, like.
No, you're, you're good, um, and then I just, you know, that's that, I, you know, I agree to, for the next meeting. Um, then just a couple of things, um, for Shelley, so one of the things that you had found was those Visa payments. Like, the Visa, the stuff that the city was, um, making, the, the residents weren't paying for it, that the city, we, we.
Oh, the, the service charges, okay, 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 okay.
Yes. So, I know this was brought up multiple years ago when it came out, and I got, I, I, it was talked about in meetings and it got blown off and like, no, it's not, and I knew we shouldn't have been doing that. And I'm glad you found it, I'm glad you guys cut that off and that, that's the resident, and remind me again, how much money was that?
It's like fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Fifteen hundred dollars a month, I want everybody to hear that.
Well, that's, to be clear, that's not gonna be added to the bills.
Co- correct, but.
So, so like, let's, it's not a winnow.
If you choose to use that.
If you choose to use that, but this is, this is money that is gonna be paid by somebody.
Yes, by the resident.
Just for.
So, and to, to give a, to make it look like, if I'm paying cash and somebody's paying a credit card, they're not gonna be taking care of me, they're taking care of themselves, the way it should be, that's how cities should work. That's how, so, that's, so, that's, that's what I'm saying, that's a good find, it's a good thing to get rid of that, just stuff like that, so I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's just, I just add that, EJ, that's a con- convenience, it's what.
Correct, correct, I, well, I'm, what I'm basically saying is, I don't like to see other residents pay for someone else for something like that. Everybody should be paying, if they choose to pay a credit card, they need to pay that fee, if they choose to pay cash or check, they don't have to be charged that fee, cause everybody's, you know, making their choice on that. I don't think the entire community should be paying for that.
That's a good point, EJ, because the other, other tax resident, the residents paying taxes are paying for that.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say. Correct, and that's the point that was made, I, multiple years ago when this started and I got blown off, like I was, you know, yeah, I know what I'm talking about. And the other thing I wanna address, this, I, it shocked me, when I saw a picture, the sidewalk up here. I, that, another one of those pissed me off, Julie, you're sitting up in there, I think, remember the sidewalk we talked about?
Yeah.
Why this wasn't done, like, I was, it, it was discussed, we had heated debates about that sidewalk, I asked multiple times, why wouldn't, we can't get it done? To go to find out, but you had a conversation, and it's already done, like, I didn't even know about it, so thank you.
Oh, I bet that.
Did connect a client?
Yeah, it was, it was, this is before you even on here, this is our, you know, and I'm like, it was just like, it's, it should have been done a long time, I, I, it's, we all know what we're talking about, go back to past. Thank you for getting it done, I don't know.
I had a colleague from the daycare brought up the meeting, so.
Yep, yep, it's done. I, I have gotten so many complaints over the years and then it went on deaf ear, and then now that it's done, it's about time. So, and then the other thing is, I, I know Bruce, it doesn't look like, you know, at some point, I would just encourage you to talk to Scott and Shelley, if the office in there, I know it's a mess. If you're like, look, I know she's trying to transition into the office, if you've got a transition plan, to maybe talk to them to try to, so before the end of the year, that's the only thing I wanna encourage you to do. So, other than that, I've gotten nothing else?
Yes, yep. Yeah, our compliments to them, they were easy and cooperative, worked, made it really pretty easy for us, you know, we talked, I'm probably mad at you on that, and they just, they had the contractor and they couldn't get to it until then. So I actually talked to the guy about, you know, we got, now we got that pond, that potential pond in our name, it's up there, got a car, or, he smoked a game, they pulled it out.
Yep, another one, so.
So thank you to Virginia Gag as well for that.
Very much, very cooperative, but we really, Brian and I didn't have much to do with it, we just had my flight request and, and they did it, but it was Molly, uh, there at the daycare center that brought us to our attention.
Tim, thanks for coming out, um, appreciate you, appreciate that, the, uh, podium and just being one to bring it up in public, it's definitely don't need to be a threatened community and, but it, it still takes a lot of courage to do that, so I appreciate it. I also like your son's interpretation of, of it, which is like, we can't always explain why people do what they do, um, offer grace where we can. However, I also agree that invoking the council of the city, probably, um, to me, that's just as I interpret, interpreted, think about it, that, that's what maybe makes it not just a frightened citizen trying to say that's an easement and you can't be there. So, um, I'm anxious to hear, I wanna hear some more information on what, um, the city attorney thinks, actually, about this, about Dave's proposal and the conversation at the next meeting.
Thank you. All right, um, I do, uh, with, um, with Kathy at her home, like you were putting up with me walking around the yard and looking at things. Um, and, uh, one thing, one thing that this brought out to me too was that, um, you know, it doesn't really, really revolve so much around this particular incident, but that, uh, people often don't understand where their property is as far as even doing things with it. Um, and especially on the street side, you know, like you mentioned, rolling the grass and thinking that's why we, we all do that, um, we're supposed to, but, um, we do it to keep things nice and tidy too. But I think we should put on something that does talk about the right of ways and the responsibilities, uh, and, uh, I think that'd be helpful to a lot of folks, whether it's, you know, our site distance issues, the, the, that.
Well, we actually put something out on, uh, social media on that for political science, not to put them in the right of way and, and that, uh, you know, so I had to hold on, I hadn't sparked, sparked that. So, yeah, we actually did have some, not that long ago.
I think the point is that the council members aren't, aren't to be walking around, they're there enforcing rules. And, and I think at least the three council members here agree with that, you know, we, we do our duties in this room, um, and, and we bring concerns from the residents to hear, right? So we can all talk about it and bring it out, and we don't need to be walking around trying to enforce it on our own.
I do wanna encourage the citizenry to record things to our, our partners, that's the, uh, sheriff's office, law enforcement, um, that helps them a lot of times find and consult. Just like with the, the department, things like that, so, um, that's important to comment apart, that's what's separate from.
I just built on that, Tiffany, uh, I know her from the Benton County Sheriff's Office, she's been a good, uh, she's got her liaison officer here, I'd give her a shot, she's been very helpful to us. I think if you have gotten to know her a little bit, uh, really getting a good relationship with her as our local person in the community, very helpful. Uh, really getting a good relationship with her as our local person in the community, very helpful.
And with that, we've completed our business for this evening, and, uh, we invite a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Bell. Role called up is Trevor Dersky?
Aye.
EJ Bell?
Aye.
David Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
What time is it, may I ask? Thank you.
So, Shelly, were you just giving out the reservation?
Yeah, I'm sure Scott, I, yeah, I just see that.